Called him yesterday.
I'm no child.
They're normal circumstances.
Yeah.
It's like the thing.
So.
Technology problem and they lost information.
But I'm saying those two learnings rest.
Your interest in one or the other, does it matter to you?
Um, no.
Do you want to be like chair as well?
Do you get your people this? Cause there's.
Cause you're good.
Well, you can actually.
You can.
But if you want, if you'd rather be chair and jump in.
Um, yeah.
Just take this, but it would my December statement. I mean, he's. And he does my.
Yeah, so I had no idea until.
I didn't know.
Josh came in and. Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, they shouldn't have did. We need these.
Better known, you are not.
I just put here, I don't make it. I would have known his feelings, okay?
A rat tea instead of coffee, not a good thing. So.
You have library board yesterday?
We did, I was nominated the president. I don't know why they do presidents in that chairs. I don't know.
Well, anyway.
I don't think so. That I should ask. Ah, shoot.
We had landfill yesterday.
How'd that go?
I think, you know.
Are they still on waste? So it's on the, um, here?
Oh, Danny tries to bring it up every time, but he's done. That was his last meeting.
We did not find any.
It'll, are the waste, okay, good. So then we're, we're done.
We're done now.
I used to have.
As I have zero, no. But I think this.
Trying to get them.
Didn't find any.
Yeah. Keep the money out. Two of my.
It's my understanding.
But they found some up at. That were like.
Okay, well, Gus Roberts.
Thirty miles from that site where they know they dumped them.
We had a old. Red piece or twenty five years. Oh, yeah, we used to raise.
Wow.
We have five events of Lincoln. Us farms, you know, and then everybody brought food and get.
In the landfill.
You know, after farms. Now we did drag.
Hired an assistant.
The lawns across countries.
But the Greg's were sensitive.
Yeah, I had. I had a seventy one.
Oh, that is sort of.
With a four forty sacks in it.
Iron.
A German order.
Oh.
That thing. I think it was like. McLees. Oh, yeah, horrible.
To get all the drunks and Janelle.
I was like.
Which was what.
Especially through the snow, you made into that grass down below.
I get the feeling she doesn't think.
Happy front end.
Hang on.
There's a three forty pool. The, the ones in Kawasaki fans.
She walked out the door and. Let him do it.
Oh, mine's. We had a fan, was fan group sacks, yeah.
You know.
To walk out the door.
I saw.
It was, it was.
Yeah, but right, yeah, that thing.
Yeah.
By it is. Yeah.
I will say.
Pretty good shape, you know, with those things.
I agree.
I got it from one guy who bought.
Okay, folks, my goodness. We're late, I was too busy talking. Anyway. If I understand this right, we are live streaming, right? So, um, when you're talking, we want to make sure you speak up in a. In a.
We're all whole.
Loud voice, but anyway, we'll call the meeting to order and rise for the play.
I fight the regions. Under God.
Just left him a voicemail.
I just said, we haven't heard.
We need our name placards for everybody.
Y'all know who we are, right? We're good.
Okay, we'll look to approve the agenda.
I'll move it, Mr. Chair.
Second bit.
Any discussion? Not on paper, say hi.
Hi.
Close. Okay, first up, we have the university extension program update Suzanne. We've got Suzanne, Sarah, Christine, Terry, Brian, Jennifer, whoa, we got everybody. Anyway, Suzanne, you, we'll let you start and you can kind of.
I already snuck over here, so hopefully that works for you.
People's is kind of a going away party too?
Oh, it is kind of now that you say it. Okay. Well, I just thank you for having us here when we were talking about that extension hasn't been to the county board to give kind of a holistic office update for quite a few years. We took this as an opportunity to do a kind of a feature presentation. So we have a little bit under an hour of information for you, but I welcome you at any time. Ask questions, be interactive and help us explain even more what we do. So, um, Pine County is an important part of the land grant university. Land Grant University is a part of the federal government on the cooperative extension. And the county extension office has the front door of the university right here in a county extension office. We get lots of questions and one of the members of our team that is not here is Roxanne Orvis. She's a vital member. She's staffing the office right now. She gets all kinds of questions that she deals with and triages. So lots and lots of questions come in from consumers. We also do a lot of programming in the area of agriculture, natural resources, family development, um, community development and youth development. So we're going to kind of give a little expose of those efforts that we do in Pine County. And many of these topics are really relevant to community members because, um, they enrich people's lives. They help them grow their own food and know how to preserve and prepare that. But also agricultural producers are learning new tips and tricks on creating a difference on their bottom line as well as developing youth and community. So we're going to give you a little overview of that. So yes, as you mentioned, Commissioner Lovegren, I am going to be switching roles. And this is such a fabulous way to highlight the end of my time working with Pine, a really wonderful community and county. So first I'll call up Katie, she's gonna kick us off.
Oh, this is fancy. And I should say, we do have speakers online too, so they'll just interject when it's time, but they're speaker here. All right, so the U of M extension Pine County is, our mission is to make a difference by connecting community needs and university resources to address critical issues in Minnesota. Um, I am the, sorry, this is also mission, this is how we do research, education and value. All parts are needed in order to, for us to do our job. All right, I am the agricultural educator, egg, food and natural resources, or also known as AFNR. Um, our mission specifically for our program is to strengthen Minnesota's food, agriculture and environment through research-based education and programs. We do this in multiple ways. Um, here's three that helps us reach our goals. So we strengthen the food and agriculture. So extension research and education improves crop yields, animal health, farm productivity and water conservation across our sixty seven thousand four hundred farms. And then we protect our natural resources, including soil, water and woodlands. And we have over two thousand extension natural resources volunteers. So we have a volunteer program that's specifically for natural resources. Just the same as the bottom one there, we have over two thousand master gardener volunteers as well. So master gardener volunteers are, is under Terry, but, um, so we have both the natural resources and the, um, and the gardeners and under us, so in AFNR. So what does that look like on a county level? Well, the three main things are research, relationships and education. So as a local extension educator, we connect extension specialists to local farmers and farms for conducting research, which benefits the farmers when data is analyzed. So for example, um, I'm going to be participating in a study done with a specialist on high tunnels. So, so I would conduct the research on the farms in the county for the specialist that's going to be researching soil health inside, in the high tunnels, specifically on salt levels causing issues with production. And when completed, the farmer will then have those soil tests at hand so they can learn how to better their practice and as well as the analyzation of what is going on with their high tunnels. So this improves their productivity, which ultimately helps the county and our local businesses. Relationships, um, by asking and doing farm visits, going to different commodity group meetings and inserting myself into producers' everyday life, I get a foot in the door for the future. So farmers with various product, production types are then more willing to reach out to me to ask for help. And then I can connect them to different resources. And then when they also ask for recommendations and advice, I can develop and deliver programs that meet their needs so that their operation becomes more successful, which in turn makes the county more productive too. So for example, um, some of these educational events that I'll be putting on will be the farm transition that's coming in February. So this is specifically for farmers who are older, they want to move their, their farm to the next generation, or they want to retire, but they don't know what to do with their farm. So we have, um, our egg business management team specialists that specialize in this area that we then reach out to and ask to come do a program for those people who are looking for that. Um, same for the corn and soybean conference, we have corn and soybean specialists that'll be coming to talk about different things related to corn and soybeans and growing it here in east central Minnesota. Um, we're also going to be doing a fruit pruning workshop in March and then a wildlife series that's going to start in March too. So hitting a whole bunch of different areas of agriculture throughout the board. Next is four H.
So, good morning. Let me see, Sarah is, there she is. Um, so my name's Jan Drodowski and I am the program leader in the Northeast region and with me this morning is Sarah Oden Dahl, who's your local extension educator. So we want to move to the next slide. So our mission for Minnesota youth is to ensure that youth thrive in their happiness, success and connection to others and to the world around them. And if we move to the next slide, Sarah, um, and moving forward, so two thousand twenty one, twenty two was really a building year for us as we were coming out of the pandemic and being able to connect with young people and families in person again. Um, we've reestablished our presence in many places. Uh, two thousand twenty two and twenty three is really a growth year for us and we are embracing that in Pine County um, with a focus on ensuring quality and, um, also paying attention to our diversity, equity, inclusion and access at the center of all of our work um, as we branch out and think about engaging new audiences. So if we move to the next slide, Sarah, so, um, growth through partnership, we have had a wonderful opportunity thanks to the Pine County commissioners who have invested some funding in four H so that we can expand our reach working with the Malax Band. Um, uh, we have over the last year had many meetings. Um, I want to thank Terry Lovegren, who has been, um, a critical partner in this and helping me make connections and move this work forward. Um, so we've met, we've done site visits, um, I was able to sit in on a session at the, the center where young people meet, it's a beautiful facility. Um, they're doing some amazing work there and we've had conversations about how four H might, um, partner and bring programming out to, um, that center. Um, our work so far, um, has been, like I said, meetings and observations and we recently completed a position description. Um, and Carlos is in the process of reviewing that. And once he, um, gives me the goal, the green light, we're going to be able to post that and then work on hiring, um, somebody. So, um, this work has been fascinating. Um, uh, met a lot of good people, most recently, um, when I did a site visit, I was able to connect with, um, Roberta Dunkley with kids called Birdy. She's an absolutely wonderful, um, partner and, and advocate for those young people. Uh, you can just tell by watching them and their interactions what an important person she is in their lives. And, uh, when I finished a, uh, just a short presentation with the kids on four H and the programs we do, she leaned over and she said, I have all kinds of ideas I want to talk to you about. Um, and so, uh, we're trying to connect and, and set up a meeting to, to really think about what we can do and how we can be involved in that, that community, which is exciting work. And, uh, we are so grateful for your investment. But I want to turn it over because Sarah is doing some amazing things locally and, uh, I want you to hear about her efforts and, um, the work that she's, she's done and how she's engaged the, the community.
Thank you, Jan. Uh, again, my name is Sarah Oden Dahl, I'm your local four H extension educator. And I just want to talk a little bit about some of the specific things that we have been doing. If you don't know, I was transferred to Pine County in May after spending three and a half years in Scott County. And so I've been here just a little over six months doing this work. Um, and we're really excited about things that are happening in Pine County four H. So we've put intentional focus this year on engaging the community. Um, we're working to strengthen our existing partnerships, um, specifically with the kind, the Pine County Fair Board and making sure that's a really strong relationship because it is so crucial to the way that our program year wraps up. Um, and also working among our extension programs, I have great colleagues that you are hearing from today and they have lots of great ideas and lots of great assistance that they can lend to me and that we can work together so that we are really engaging the community and giving high quality programming. We're also reaching out to new partners and I don't want to name anybody specifically since we're not at that stage yet. Um, but specifically I'm looking at arts organizations within the county and within our local schools and seeing what can we offer that adds to what they already have? And how can we team up so that we have, um, better outcomes for both of us and are really achieving the missions that we have in the community? And then also just being visible in the community. Um, there are lots of, uh, sort of misnomers about four H. You know, lots of people think if you don't have a cow, you can't be in four H. And so part of our work is just becoming visible and helping people know what four H is. So this summer we were able to be in attendance at the Freedom Fest booth, even though that weather was not delightful that day. Um, we've distributed materials at back to school night in Pine City. We were able to send flyers home through the elementary schools with all of the other elementary schools in the county. And so we're just increasing that visibility to our local community. And at the same time, we really know that the strength of four H and the health of four H relies in providing support and connection for both adults, youth and families. So we're really working on supporting our current adult volunteers and, um, recruiting new adult volunteers. We have a lot of curriculum resources at the local and state level that we are able to offer to them to make their work a little bit easier. We're offering additional training opportunities to help them really connect to the mission and find better ways to be more effective with less time and to help youth grow a variety of skills. Uh, and then really engaging in individual feedback from and for staff. So what that means is that I am able to observe club meetings and other opportunities and give them ideas and give them feedback about the work that they're doing, but also hear from them, how can I make this work easier? What are you missing from staff? What would make it easier to do this work? And so having that two-way feedback has been really critical so far, uh, since I've been here. And we're also supporting new four H families. Um, we know that four H can be a little bit hard to navigate for new families, just because there are so many different pieces of it. And so we are increasing our communication. Uh, we are, uh, especially beefing up sort of, here's the four H basics and making sure that we're making contact throughout the year with those new families. Um, we're trying to increase access points like we had already talked about with, um, the partnership with the Malax Band. We are just trying to add ways that youth and families can get involved. Um, this also includes, we have just kicked off a brand new club in the Pine City area that is growing very strong and we're excited about that. And we're also being really intentional about assessing our systems for how easy are they to use? How much jargon do we have in our communications? Um, how many clicks does it take to get from point A to point B? How, how is this system that we use for fair entry? How is that bogging people down or where are the, not the misunderstandings there? So really looking at all of these pieces in order to provide opportunities for youth, families and volunteers. Um, where many see challenge, kids see opportunity was the theme of four H week this year, which is every October. And we just recognize that there is so much opportunity available in Pine County for both our youth and our adults. And I got a really great email from a new volunteer that we have screened this year who is stepping up, um, in leadership. And I just want to leave you with a quote from this volunteer from the email she sent me. She said, I am up for the challenge and opportunities that I would undoubtedly have and to learn and change to be a better person and leader. After reflecting on these last sentences, I realized that four H not only improves the lives of the children, but also the volunteers. And that is really what we are aiming for is to be a resource to the community for everyone whose lives touches four H. Um, so I'm happy to take any questions and if not, I will pass the baton over to Kristen from the SNAP program.
A- as you're sitting down, Sarah, I just, I just want to, you know, Katie and, and Sarah are, were born here.
Yes.
They, uh, they understand, I think, uh, Hinkley and Pine City and the whole county. And, and it's, it's refreshing for me to go to a cattleman's association and see Katie there interacting with the, the, uh, beef producers and, uh, go to a fair board meeting and see Sarah interacting with fair board members. And I, I, I think, um, it's a, it's a pretty cool program we have going on. Thanks for your hard work because it, it's, it's probably a lot easier to sit home on a rainy night than it is to go to a meeting, but you've made the effort, so.
Thank you, yes. I think Katie and I would both say we're really happy to be serving our home.
Anytime you have a question on any slide, just. I think it's you, Krista.
It is me. Oh. Oh, other way. Okay. Hello, I'm Kristen Riley. I am the new SNAP Ed educator, um, in Pine County as of May. So I'm pretty new still and so I'm happy to, oop. There we go. Oh, I'm upside down. Oh, that's mine. Photo's not showing up, supposed to be strawberries. Okay. Okay, so SNAP Ed is the educational branch of the SNAP program, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. So we do a lot of education, which I love. It's my favorite piece of nutrition. Uh, the, it, our SNAP educator role is really supporting and promoting nutrition and healthy lifestyle cho- choices, specifically among low income SNAP eligible, uh, individuals and families in the community. So that's kind of, oh, did I get it? Oh, there we go. There is this.
Oh, good.
Okay, let's see. Oh, and then go. Yes, upside down. Okay, I just apparently. Training on. Remote. Okay, so SNAP Ed, uh, it's a combination of different kind of tactics, essentially. It's direct education and also indirect education. And of course indirect education, uh, would be something like sending newsletters or flyers home to parents of the direct education class we're doing with kids. Um, so direct education, indirect education and PSE work, um, policy systems and environmental changes. And, um, so we do kind of a combination of all of those items.
Okay.
Again, okay, all right, SNAP Ed goals. So one of the goals, so this is kind of our collective SNAP Ed goals. Uh, goal one, deepen partnerships to contribute to cultural, culturally sustaining organizational and community changes that promote holistic health of SNAP eligible Minnesotans with emphasis on healthy eating and active living. So that's the first one. So really is to deepen the partnerships. And goal two is promoting holistic health of SNAP eligible Minnesotans with emphasis on culturally sustaining. They really wanted to highlight that word culturally sustaining, healthy eating, active living and food resource management ways of living and behaviors. So goal two really encompasses direct education. Goal three is improving policy systems and environments to promote holistic health with emphasis on culturally sustaining, healthy eating and active living. And so goal three encompasses like the PSE, policy systems and environmental changes. So those are our collective SNAP Ed goals for the whole year. Again, yeah. Okay, next time I'll have this down. All right, so one of the curriculums. I'm just gonna hold, one of the curriculums I'm doing right now, I'm just gonna talk about one, um, is Go Wild with Fruits and Veggies curriculum. And that's a lot of fun to teach with the kiddos. Um, right now I'm doing that curriculum with third and fourth grade classrooms in Hinkley Elementary and East Central, um, Elementary, which they each have like three third grade classrooms and four fourth grade classrooms. So it's a lot of fun and the kiddos really seem to enjoy it a lot and it's really a cool thing to see. So you might be wondering what that all entails, you know, the Go Wild with Fruits and Veggies curriculum. Let's see, so it's basically seven lessons lasting about forty five to sixty minutes each and it's once or twice a month. And so with these classrooms, typically I'll do like two or three sessions back to back because we don't want to have like huge, like, huh, you know, seventy kid classroom or, you know. So I'll go in each classroom and teach three lesson ones with fifteen minutes, uh, in between for prep. So, uh, like I said, it kind of goes throughout the year because it's once or twice a month. And Kirk, kids learn about fruits and veggies, taste tests, activities, games, stories, physical activities. So we really get them engaged and, you know, we want them to have a lot of fun with it, you know, um, because a lot of kids have positive associations with like sweets and cake, you know, and birthdays and holidays and everything. So there's not, you know, so this is a way to really get kids to have that psychological, like, um, positive association with fruits and veggies and to really help them learn about what it can do for them, like what can fruits and veggies do for them? And so that's really, it's really fun to see and, um, students get a sample tasting of fruits and veggies, um, each lesson. So, uh, with the lessons, basically, uh, the first one is an intro- introduction to all the colors. But then with each lesson, we go into different colors, like the first, uh, the next one is like blue purple fruits and veggies. And they get to try like blackberries and purple cabbage. And actually, they really, um, they really enjoyed the purple cabbage with ranch. They're coming back for seconds on that. And, you know, the, the third one is more like red fruits and veggies and, um, going and they get to try like raspberries and red pepper. So each one is based, each lesson is based on a different color and they get to taste test and try, you know, different fruits and veggies of, veggies of that color. And each lesson is also associated with a different animal character. Um, because research shows that helps bringing in animals and just having fun with it and doing the different activities. So we're really promoting eating the rainbow of fruits and veggies because it gives them a different mix of nutrition. And really, um, yeah, just, um, having a lot of fun with it so they can really get that psychological positive association with fruits and veggies and naturally want to choose more of that in their real life. So that's just one of the curriculums that I'm doing right now, which is a lot of fun. Uh, all right, thank you. And do you have any questions for me?
Um, so when we, Jan, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, when we were meeting with Malax Bay, the one thing that they said was that they wanted to have food classes or, you know, just to learn more for their kids and, and to bring the families into it. Um, is that things you do normally?
Yeah, like the cooking class, they say.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. Um, we have various cooking classes, like one of them is Cooking Matters. And, um, Haley and I going to partner with, uh, uh, what, uh, Vic and a public health ship, um, in Pine County to maybe, uh, do a cooking matters classes for, uh, their participants. And that's kind of like it would be cooking matters is a six weeks course, um, one class a week for two hours. So it might be every Tuesday, every two hours and they would break it up into, um, like, we would have maybe four or five stations where they each get to learn how to cook a, a recipe, a healthy recipe each lesson. So it would be, you know, um, so they would get a nutrition education at the beginning of the class, you know, on some topic. Um, and then you would go in and teach them how to cook a specific healthy recipe and they would get to try that recipe at the very end. And, um, they would learn about different. And they would learn about different cutting skills or cooking tips. And then they also get various incentives, like they, once they attend four of the classes, they get a Cooking Matters recipe book and educational handouts. They also, for Cooking Matters, they get a free bag of groceries every single week, which is awesome for these families. There is an ask price for partners. There's an ask price of eight hundred to eight hundred and fifty dollars for that course. However, Cooking Matters, they will fully fund it if a partner can't fully fund it themselves, the first series. So if they really want to try it, if a partner really wants to try Cooking Matters series out, cooking matters that they will fully fund it.
Would you suggest that we connect? Krista?
I think, I think that's one of the things that we talked about with Jan was they were, they were excited about having the families learn how to cook together.
Yes.
You know, because that's something that we're lacking. And when I toured the family resource centers in Colorado, they had cooking classes there too, that they offered. So I just, I'm really excited to see what we can do. Yeah.
And, and I, I don't want to just say Cooking Matters, we have other cooking classes as well that are actually free, like Cooking as a Snap. It's very similar. You just don't have a free bag of groceries every single week that they would get in Cooking Matters. So they have Cooking as a Snap and we also have a Healthy Life Healthy Bootcamp, which is a one-time cooking class. So there's various ones that we do. But I always like to highlight Cooking Matters because it's such a fantastic curriculum and it's awesome. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
I think Terry's next. You're the IT, yeah.
Hey, do I hit the arrow? And then who do I point it at?
Into space. There you go.
It's not working.
Kristin, it needs you. There you go.
Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to share about our great Pine County Master Gardener program. I've had the privilege to coordinate the program here in Pine County. And I work fourteen hours a week as a part-time employee coordinating this program. See, okay, hit the arrow again.
Me hours to really work a week, Terry.
Don't let me hear that.
Fourteen hours a day.
Yeah, sometimes, yeah. I don't report all my hours unfortunately because you're looking at emails, emails at home all the time, you know, and so if I charged you for every hour I work, it would probably double that. Okay, our mission is provide resource-based horticulture information to residents of the county. And we do it through educational and project-based efforts to inspire change and try to encourage people to eat more healthy foods and be healthy people. And we're trying to improve our healthy environment and communities and also a healthy planet. Okay, let's try again. Okay, we do this through, right now we have over forty trained volunteers. Last year we had eight new interns. This year we have four new interns. And their first year, they have to put in forty, fifty volunteer hours of service in addition to taking a forty-eight hour core course. So it's pretty intense the first year. And then every succeeding year, they need to put in twenty-five volunteer hours to maintain their status as an active master gardener. And we have some really wonderful, talented people. And that's why it's the funnest job in the world to work with them because they're so creative and skilled. Our biggest event there is Horticulture Day, which we have at Pine City High School. We had to cancel it for two years due to COVID, but last year we finally brought it back. Normally we get a hundred fifty to two hundred people attending. Last year we had only a hundred. But we're, we met last night to plan this coming year's program. We do a lot with youth outreach. We're really happy to be working in three schools right now. Pine City, Pine Grove, Ojibwe School near Lake Lena and the East Central School this past year. In the past, we have also worked a lot with Hinkley Elementary School and their school garden. Media is another area we work with through our Facebook posts. We have two wonderful Facebook masters who do a wonderful job of posting about two posts every week. This summer, this year, we've put on two hundred seventeen posts on the Pine County Master Gardener Facebook page. And we get about a hundred fifty to three hundred views for our posts. And so we're, we're trying to outreach in every, every way possible to the public. We've done a newspaper column in the past, but newspapers only print it when they have room. And so we found Facebook is a much more effective way of reaching the public. We also resurrected the Garden Gab program that Rod Greider had when he was here. And we divided amongst four counties. So every two months, each county has to do a program and it's aired on KBK Radio, the first and third Wednesday mornings, I believe, at nine thirty. Community education, we've done classes over the years. This past year, an example was starting garden seeds that was held at East Central in Willow River and well received and well done. Our farmer's market every week for seventeen Fridays this summer, from June through September. We, our master gardeners had a booth there and they talked to ninety, over ninety adults and eleven children. Our fair booth is always a popular and effective way of interacting with the public. We kept track, how many people did we talk to? And this year was three hundred twenty-eight and a hundred and fifty registered for our door prizes. And we got seventeen who said, well, I'm interested in the master gardener program, so follow up, which I did. The Pine City Community Garden, we have managed since its inception in two thousand and seven. And we had thirty-two plots this year. And Carol Evans also has been our manager lately and she secured a sixteen hundred dollar grant. And they put in two stock tank raised beds and three steel framed raised beds which will help handicapped and seniors that are renting plots. Our school projects is another area that we've worked a lot in. And I'll see if, can move here. These are three schools I mentioned that we worked with this past year. In Pine City, we, we're lucky. One of our master gardeners used to do educational programs at Como Park for many years. And she created the curriculum this year on helping our garden helpers. And what they did is they learned about what species help us in our gardens, even though we may not be aware of them. And they found out how they help us and how we can help them. And they focused on birds, toads and pollinator insects. And they tried to, as a, on, and hands-on activity, they built a bird feeder. Here they're building toad boats, toad houses, because you want to, you want to shelter for toads to go under. So, and, and they can get out of the sun and they can eat insects. And, and so that's an asset that we didn't realize existed. And also then the last day, they made seed tapes just with toilet paper and put seeds of native plants that the master guard or the students could go home and plant. Another project we worked with was the Pine Grove Ojibwe School. And that was fun. Terry Holgate and Linda Bennett there in the background worked with twelve students and they planted tomato seeds. And then they taught them how to plant them and harvested them and weeded the garden and watered them. And the surplus went to the families. They tried to encourage families to eat more healthy vegetables. And they also had enough to sell. And it was interesting, our master gardener said the cutest thing or probably the shock, most shocking statement of this little boy in the front there was that when he dug up a tomato, he's, or took out a tomato, he says, are these real plants? It showed how we could create awareness of the value of growing your own food. And then another project I'll mention, in East Central, Deb Conieska got a ten thousand dollar grant. So they could install five raised beds at East Central Elementary School. She also taught a community ed class there on safe harvest or handling of produce at harvest. And also how to grow plants in a hydroponic system. At East Central, they have a hydroponic system. And she was all excited last night to tell us they have eight cucumbers growing in the hydroponics in school right now. And, and they're also growing snap peas, bibellia, sage, basil. And that's pretty amazing for in the winter, being doing that in school. Okay, the Pine Sig Discovery Garden and all is just the other thing I wanted to highlight. Cindy Novy owned the flower shop here in Pine City, passed away of COVID a couple of years ago. And the family gave us some memorial money and we went to the city and says, well, what can we do to honor Cindy? And beautify the city. And then our hidden agenda is education. So those are our three goals. And the park and rec director said, here, take the Rotary Park just south of the river. Renovate it, redo it. It's all yours. So we, it's been quite a process, but we have raised twenty-six thousand dollars. We've gotten a ten thousand dollar grant that is being used to build a pavilion. We brought in Julie Weisenhorn, our university extension educator and landscape design. She taught us a class here last January on how to design gardens. And she's come back to help us with plant selection. And so we were bouncing our ideas off of her always. And then the other interesting thing is, we thought, well, let's go to Pine Tech and see if they have a construction technology program. Well, sure enough, they're just starting one. And guess who's, guess who's heading it up? Jacob Mans. Who is Jacob Mans? He's an architecture professor at the University of Minnesota. Talk about serendipity or whatever. But he and his grad student have designed this gorgeous pavilion, which we're right now, hopefully have our fingers crossed in the process of finishing it and putting it up. And this winter, we wanted to get it up sooner, but due to many reasons, starting a program is pretty busy. But some other success stories, Jeff's Outdoor Services donated the pavers and he, they got in the path for it. And then we're in a process of, you know, finally, finalizing the design for where the plants go. And, and then our goal is to have classes on, for example, in the spring on pruning a crab apple tree. In, in August of dividing peonies and hopefully other things will evolve. So any questions, I'll stop at that.
There's one more slide of yours.
Okay, there's the, there's the finished product. It's beautiful. We were just shocked. And, and we were talking to him about putting in what do you call it, either crushed gravel or limestone. And Jeff, when we went to, well, we went to talk about pavers that we'd probably consider. He says, you know, I'll donate them. He's saying, I owe something to the city. I'm no longer on the fire department, so. So look at that. I mean, wow, it's quite a donation. Okay, I'm done.
Okay. And before Mary Jo and Jennifer talk, I'll just say, you've noticed a theme. A lot of the presenters so far have talked about following up with people. And I think that's key. You have staff who are really good at following up and engaging people in programs. That's a lot of the reason why your programs are thriving here in Extension Pine County. So Mary Jo and Jennifer, I don't know if Brianna is on, but
Brianna is on too, yes.
You guys, go ahead and take it away.
So can somebody forward our slides?
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you. My internet, my internet is being a little wonky, so I may end up turning my camera off, but.
We can hear you.
Okay, can you go back to the first slide? Perfect. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with all of you today and to share about our programming. My name is Mary Jo Catrice and I am program leader in the Center for Family Development. And I lead our programming around family resiliency and some in health and nutrition. And so within our center, we are divided into different program areas. And like Kristin shared around SNAP Ed, we are broader than that and do work across, supporting families across all of many different topics. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. But really just supporting families as they, as the needs of the community are brought to, you know, we work with the community to understand the needs and to really try to meet those needs through our programming. So at the heart of our work is really working with families and communities, leading to greater health, resilience and wellbeing. And the three things that are really at the focal point are that families are at the heart of our work. And that we do put communities first, that we listen, learn and respond. And that we are all about building authentic relationships and that we know how important relationships are to our work. And I think you've seen that theme as well throughout the presentations this morning. Next slide, please. So how do we do our work and how do we do that? This is a framework that we have that guides our work within family development. And again, you're going to see at the heart of that, the intersection of those three circles of academic science, personal experience, lived experience and indigenous science is health for all. And so how we do our work are all of the words around those circles. And I just really want to again emphasize relationship building. And I think like Jan mentioned too, there's lots of time spent building those relationships. So as you see, slow over fast, that is one of the things that amongst all those other words, one of the things that we really do emphasize in our work, because we really, those relationships and trusted relationships are so important. Next slide, please. So how do we connect to community? Clearly the theme of collaboration is there, but we also educate individuals and families directly. So direct education is, as we like to call it, so working and providing education in person and virtually online. We train community professionals. We know we can't be everywhere all of the time. So we do a lot of what we call Train the Trainer in the work that we do so that we can help build capacity and sustainability within communities. And then we again learn from our community members. What is that wisdom from the community that we can bring our university resources to communities, to Pine County? But what are, what is that knowledge and that expertise that our community members bring to the work that we do collaboratively? Next slide, please. So just overview of some of the programs and kind of content areas that we have in our family resiliency program area is we look at family relationships. And so we have parent education. We do education around family engagement that looks at relationships between schools and parents and youth. We have, we do work around mental wellbeing and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. We have an area around financial capability. So looking at family resource management, decision-making and later life issues. We do work around opioid and substance use and rural stress. And then we have expertise in working with BIPOC communities. And in the last five years, we've been working, we have a couple grants that we've been working with Pine County with. And one of those is our, what we refer to as working around our substance, substance use and recovery around our opioid crisis. And we've been working with Becky Foss and Janaye Hicks to really understand what are the needs of Pine County? And how can we build that recovery, what we call recovery capital? So really looking at those supports. And so doing that, doing many different types of education, including healing through history, mental health first aid, working with different recovery centers to provide wellness baskets and provide training that really helps to support that recovery across the county and within the different communities. across the county and within the different communities in within Pine County. So I am going to turn it over to, so next slide, please. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Jennifer Garbo, who will share a little bit about the work that she leads along with Brianna Matrias around our American Indian Resource and Resiliency Team and the opportunity that Pine County has given us to partner with Youth Development and Jan Drodowski to really focus on mental wellbeing across the county. So Jennifer.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay, great. I have like multiple screens going on. I'm trying to look at my notes and try to look at the PowerPoint. Thank you for that introduction, Mary Jo. My name is Jennifer Garbo and I'm an extension educator in the Center for Family Development. I live in Duluth and but I, I served the entire state as a, as a regional educator. So I'm just going to talk, talk with you all for a few minutes about our American Indian Resource and Resiliency Team. So we create and deliver culturally adapted and holistic health education. And as Mary Jo was describing, that we really are moving toward a way of work where we favor slow over fast. And by that we mean developing really deep, meaningful and authentic relationships. Because we understand that our tribal partners sometimes have experienced the university in, in multiple ways. And so sometimes the university kind of comes in and they may do some programming and they kind of bop back out and then they might kind of go back in. And we, when we formed this team, it'll be five years this year. We understood that it's really important to develop really meaningful relationships that are going to endure. And so as needs and things change within our tribal communities and we, with our substance use disorder grants, we work specifically with the Malax Band and Boys Fort Band. But we are also getting requests and things from other tribal partners as they learn about our work, so. So our efforts really occur within a system of existing relationships with our tribal partners and community members. We want to increase the community's capacity in addressing the opioid crisis and other health related issues. Our team is really very deeply and personally connected to the communities that we work with. And Brianna will highlight some of her connections within the communities that she is working with. And we work to create activities that are developed based on relationship building and they are vetted and approved by tribal governments. So we have ongoing relationships with tribal governments as well. All of our education and programming is delivered in a responsive and not prescriptive way. We understood that when we started this work, that we may have some educational resources that we may need to adapt to meet the needs of our tribal communities. And what we're finding is there's an emerging model for a different way for working with American Indian communities within our center. And we also share our learnings with all of Extension. So I don't know if there are any questions or we can wait till the end, but I want to give Brianna enough time to talk more about the, the different programs and things that she's been doing. So.
Looks like you can proceed.
All right, Meow Witch, bujou, everyone. Good morning. It is wonderful to be in front of you all. I hope that in the next couple of days, Mother Earth will have mercy on us as we move into this weather. Yeah, so go ahead and if you can advance the slides. Perfect. So I just kind of want to talk about some of the collaborations that we've been involved in with the work that we've been doing. And so to get started, Pine City Public Schools, I was asked to be a keynote speaker for Pine Cities. I believe it was like their in-service training. I don't even, I think it's in-service, so it was right before the school year had started. And one of the things that, that was shared with me during that time was that they were really looking at bringing folks together. It's my understanding, the, there's some history with the past couple of years and the school board, and I'm not even exactly sure what took place, but people are in, in the education staff were really looking to kind of have a reset, realignment and really hoping to start this year on a good foot. So I was asked to go in and do a presentation for them. And my presentation was called Connecting Through Relationships, Attachment and Authenticity. And it was really awesome to be able to go in there. I shared a lot of my stories with the work that I've done that helps them to resonate with it and how we show up authentically every day and or how we should show up authentically every day. But connection is so very important. And it was really interesting because I had many of those people come up to me afterwards and, and share with me that that was exactly what they needed to really help them to understand, to be reminded of that. Because a lot of them, I feel like, well, they had shared with me that they were kind of giving up hope, you know, and not looking forward to this next year. So they are hopeful that within this next year, there will be many changes that will, that will definitely help the school. So and so with that, I ended up getting connected after that. I had a few folks that had reached out to me. And wanted to have me come in and do some trainings, do some talks. And, and that kind of interned into the Vision School collaboration. And so I am working with Vision School. I, we started in November and I will go in every month and talk with the students. So that looks like me coming in. We sit around in a circle, we have, will have a topic every month and really helping them to build relationships with the students. And again, you've heard that relationships is kind of a big theme. And it, and it really is. And relationship building normally doesn't happen overnight. When we do this work and when we're in community or when we're working with organizations with people, relationship building is the most important thing for us to build that trust, to build that relationship so that when we come in, it's sort of like a seamless process. So Vision School, that's another collaboration. I will actually be there next Tuesday, meeting with the kids. And yeah, every month it's going to be different, but I'm really excited about that collaboration. Back in August, we did the Wisdom of Trauma screening. So it's a public screening on the documentary that Gabor Maté is involved in. And so the Wisdom of Trauma is the film that really helps people to understand how trauma shows up. And I love it because he just, he shares it in a way that is so simple. And yet there's many complexities to it. But it helps folks to kind of shift their perspective on how we see addiction, how we see homelessness. And so, yeah, we did that in August. We do have another one scheduled for Sandstone and that is on February 16th. I am working on the flyers, so be looking for that information. It'll be free to anybody who wants to attend, but it'll be up at the, at the government center. I think it's North, North Pine Government Center. It's the new one that's up there. I'm sure you all are aware of it. But so, yeah, February 16th will be that screening as well. Working with Becky Foss to do Healing Through History with parents and foster families. So we are looking at February, March time for that. Looking at doing a two-day back-to-back Healing Through History workshop for them. So and for those who are not quite sure what Healing Through History, what it is, is just a one-day workshop that helps us to understand the history, those foundational, important foundational history events that happen within Minnesota when it comes to indigenous communities and indigenous people. So it helps folks to understand, you know, sort of some of the challenges that we have within our communities today. Community Paint Along Event, so we teamed up with Catherine Calzroot, if any of you are familiar with her. She helped us coordinate painting event that was well-attended. I believe we had close to like 60 people. And again, so after COVID, there is definitely a realization that connection is really important. And so when we have these events, it not only is healing the event itself, but like when we can be in community with one another, it is so, so very healing for us. So that event was great. And we do also have a couple more events that we are coordinating with Catherine as well. So be looking for that information too. Resilient Impact Supporting Student Mental Health Conference. I'm not quite sure what this one is about, Mary Jo. I don't know if you can pop in and
This was a conference that we are able to support the Pine County Multidisciplinary Team to attend, and it really focused around promoting social and emotional wellbeing by supporting educators and teachers so that they can better support students. So it was a professional development opportunity that we were able to connect that team with.
Awesome, thank you. Again, tribal partners, we definitely have built great relationships with those folks. And so, you know, our, that, that's, our current collaboration is, is definitely very much involved with our tribal partners. So go ahead and advance the slide. And so, yeah, so our future collaborations moving forward. Again, this is another part of what I was just talking about with Catherine. And so she's looking at a beginning blanket making class for youth, parents, caregivers and elders. So that'll be coming up soon. We also have, of course, and Jen talked a little bit about this too, is the Forage Collaboration with MLB Youth. And that I feel like is going to be a great collaboration, just a really, a great way to get folks involved there. The Imagine Group with Malax Band. So Kayla Roberts is the gal who is spearheading that group. And the Imagine Group is made up of all girls. And I believe it's girls from ages seven on up, up to senior. And they just really focus on doing, I won't say girl things, but really helping to gain confidence, figuring out career paths. And they're really just kind of open to, to whatever, making crafts, making earrings. So we are going to be teaming up with them and really helping them to support that initiative. Coming up in, in April, we are going to be focusing on a healing conference. And we don't, we don't really have a title of it yet, but it kind of started with the Wisdom of Trauma film that we had showed. And, you know, the main guy that is in that is Dr. Gabor Maté. And our hope, our hope, we don't know yet, but our hope is to really bring about healing, understand healing and possibly have him as a speaker coming in for that. And we'll see where that goes. But the Healing Conference is just kind of a, a good way to round out the years that we have been working and doing this, doing this work. Bringing in different speakers, inviting different communities, inviting everyone to be involved in that. We're really excited about it. It'll be definitely a big project. But Pine County might be asked to, to help and, and support that event moving forward. So, but we're really excited about it. It'll be, like I said, it'll be a lot of work, but you know, it's as, you know, and Jennifer said too, as we continue to do this work, you know, people are reaching out more and more and our communities are becoming healthy. Although we would love to, to see it happen a lot sooner, we know that it, it takes time. The last few years really has been planting seeds and it has just been, it's been great to have folks, see folks kind of transition and transform onto this healing path. And so it's just really been awesome. So I don't know, I know, I think we're going a little over. I apologize, I have a tendency to, to chat a lot about it, very passionate about what I do. And yeah, shout out to Steve Hall and I have, I don't know where you are, Steve, but I heard you. So shout out to you. Good, good to hear your voice. So I'll just take any questions unless, unless we have another slide. I don't think we have another slide here, but.
One more slide, but it's just a wrap up. You could take our slides down, Ryan, so they can see the whole group, if you would be so kind to do that.
And Brianna and Sam from Heart Health.
Shout out to Sam.
Oh, thanks. Hi. If you want to rope me into any, to help with the planning of that healing, give me an email, because I would love to help.
Yes, I definitely will, Sam. Thank you. Good to see you.
So Brianna, Steve and I went to the, this is Terry. How are you?
Good, good.
We went to the Wisdom of Trauma, which was really, you know, your heart is so huge. And it was just really, it was a good night. And so I want to thank you for that invitation. And then also we did the Healing Through History. I, I don't know, I think it was kind of a, a different presentation because it was done for all of the counties through tribal relations. And so we're, you know, it amazing. And I, I just really believe that we need more of that in our community. I know that we have some of the Malax kids that have been going to the elementary school kids and teaching them how to speak Inukabwe certain words. And so when I see that, I get to ask my grandson and say, okay, tell me how to say hi. And, you know, but I think we, as a community, we need to be stronger. The only way that we're going to get that is if we get our relationships together. And so I just want to thank you for the work that you're doing and it's, it's always exciting to see things happening.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. I, I appreciate those comments. And, and yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. I am all about unity, right? Because when we think about this work that Extension is doing and the work specifically that, that our American Indian Resource and Resiliency Team does, it is about healing and it's not specifically just owned for indigenous communities. Like we all need to heal. Every single one of us needs to be able, have the bravery and courage to really sort of unpack the things that, that we all have inside. And so it is, you're absolutely right. It's, it helps us to bring everyone together and, and I'm about, I'm about that. It's about unity and it's about healing and it's about individual healing and it is also about collective healing.
Thank you. Meow Witch, Brianna, Jennifer, Mary Jo and Jan for that effort. Because you are taking the first steps in collaborating. I mean, the ARPA funds that the county, first of all, I just thank you for your support that you've had all along. It's a really wonderful place for programs to flourish here in Pine County. The ARPA funds, these are the first steps in what they're going to be doing with those ARPA funds. And at the end of the, what is it, four or five-year period, we'll be able to create some sort of list for you kind of of some actions and meaningful efforts that have happened, so.
I think Suzanne, I, I thank the whole team for being here. And Brianna, I share your, your love for talking. People here know that, but I, I think I, I'm more struck today than ever the fact that I believe if you add all the full-time equivalents together, Pine County pays for, help me, two point five people if we added them together.
H educator. H educator.
I'm I'm one.
Mm-hmm, one. Kristen is her.
Fourteen hours for Terry, Sarah.
Yeah. So you're investing a little bit.
We we invest this much money, we heard from nine people today, um, which is pretty amazing, but. We've been told Suzanne forever that when we buy into the extension program, we're really buying into the University of Minnesota. And and uh. I forget that sometimes, because when Katie talks to a group of beef producers and some of those people. Want to put some of their feeder steers in the feedlot in Rosemont, I don't even know if they still own that, but they they do, I think. Um, that's, that's quite a. Uh, a thing that that they have going for them, so they can test their cattle against the the whole world, basically. And see how their feeding program is going, and and when Terry um talks about those forty. Um, master gardeners, uh there are not forty more passionate people in Pine County about anything. Than those master gardeners, believe me, and try to try to take something away from them, but. They do a wonderful job throughout the county, and I ask a lot of questions from a lot of them, and we are, it's a big plus for. For our county, for everything, uh this whole thing is pretty amazing to me that we get all of this, and the other thing. That I noticed through today's presentation that I sometimes forget is how joined at the hip you are with HHS and public health. And probation and the sheriff's office and and our county education system, I mean. You guys have done a good job of integrating together with all of those, so appreciate it, thank you very much.
All in the sake of serving county residents.
Yeah.
Yep, you're right.
Because I heard this word today more than. Uh, you're all passionate about what you do, I don't think it's just a job for any of you, it's a, it's your passion, and it shows.
You have picked up on that piece where having local people in your county extension office, they bring in resource people, and so you're right, there's a lot of. Regional and statewide people who are working here in Pine County, which is really awesome. You also named off the volunteers, that just maximizes the effort ten, twenty, a hundredfold, so yeah, that's a big piece. I thank you for calling that out and pulling that in. Um, so I think that's really what we wanted to share, I wanted to shake um thank Commissioner Lovegrin and Commissioner Moore for serving on the Extension Committee. We do have that group of advisors who connect us, we like to come up, come with you. Sometimes to your meetings and say, what are we doing, what can we do differently, who else should we be working with, so thank you for that.
Yeah, David.
Just maybe Suzanne, before you leave, is it possible for you to give a little bit of a. Like transition update with your new position and what we should expect, there'll be maybe an interim view and then a permanent replacement or what, just since you're here.
That sounds good.
Timing is.
Okay, it sounds good, well, before I do that, I just want to shout out to Sam, because um earlier this year, I attended a Pine County management team meeting. Where Sam was talking about some of the new ways they're working at public health, so not our, only our. County residents learning from us, but Extension is learning from Pine County too, so Sam and her colleague Jess. Um, connected with us uh up at the Extension Conference, which is in Duluth, it was in October, and they were able to present. For us what they're doing and doing different ways, I hope it catches on in in Extension across the state.
That's where you missed that meeting that we wanted to, right?
Thank you for letting it go. Thank you. So, yeah, um Katie, um in one of her remarks, she mentioned the Ag Business Management Team, it's a team of statewide regional educators. Who um teach about the structural pieces of agriculture, um like she's talked about, how do you transition your farm to the next generation? Um, what can you charge for land rent, what are some of those, you know, management or business parts of the agricultural wealth? That's the team I'm transferring to, so I'll be able to lead the women and ag network across the state, and I'll be part of providing resources. To county residents, the first thing I'm gonna learn about is something called carbon credits, and how farmers can maximize their income with that, so. I hope to be back in a different capacity, so yes, to your question, David, I think that there will be an interim. Uh, Regional Director, they're still figuring out who's gonna be covering which counties that I work with and the regional offices, so um, yes, there'll be a Regional Director interim. And then there will be a search for a new Regional Director as well, I would think there'd be someone on board by, say, February, March. You know.
An interim.
Twelve weeks, what?
An interim or?
No, someone will be named January third, which is when I switch to my new role, and then I would think February sometime, someone will be in the role permanent, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, we'll see.
That's not normal for extension.
Or maybe for my taste forever. Yeah, right, so it's been a pleasure to work with Pine for sure, it's been a highlight for sure.
Well, we've appreciated it, we appreciate it.
Katie, connect me on, thank you, and these great people that are on the Zoom too, wonderful to work with, so, yeah, thank you. Okay, thanks so much for having me.
Thank you.
We're gonna take a five minute break.
Sounds good, since we talked your ears off, thank you very much.
Well.
What do you know?
How you feeling today, are ya?
Yeah, how are you?
Pleasant, I say.
I about this. Yeah, woke up this morning, doing. So are you still interested in vice chair, or should we put Terry in vice chair? Or do you want? Vice chair, chair, very chair.
Yeah, doesn't like the uh CS?
I don't know, I don't think of all of them, so. Personally, like, she'd be good as vice chair for you, maybe. But if you want. Got a, I don't know, I don't see, I don't give a rip.
Yeah, that's a good point, I don't know, I haven't thought about it.
Think about it, yeah, cuz it'll be nomination time coming up for January. Yeah. I don't know if we're gonna get that foot, they're talking about, I got the other quick snowboard.
Hey, how are ya?
Ah, I'm good.
No, I haven't been to a beach in forever.
I know it, almost forget who we are. They they tell me you're better off selling than.
Well, you always lose about nine hundred bucks. Doesn't matter, whatever.
Sam, I think we'll watch you on the live stream.
Okay, okay.
Are you, cuz it's good information too.
Are you gonna present from the podium? Okay.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
Yeah, yes, congratulations too, so, yeah, take it easy.
Or Big D, sir? Oh, you got the big gas. Who is the big gas, seven three? I didn't even know they made one that big. There's no range.
Yeah, you can't reach physically, physically. Like inside, all the controls, everything is.
Hate learning all that, where everything is when you're trying to find it. All right. We are uh gonna get a public health update.
All right. Hello, everybody, uh, we're just gonna be doing kind of an overview of just like. Little refresher of what all the things public health does, and then a couple little data point nuggets about. Um, just what we're seeing in Pine County, just cuz people are probably curious, what is happening, and then where are we going? So, hi, I'm Sam, this is Haley. Uh, so obviously, one of the programs we do is WIC, uh, it's a supplemental nutrition program that's provided to uh pregnant and parenting moms. Who are either pregnant, postpartum, or the kids up to age five. Fed, or all the funding comes from the feds, which trickle down to the state, which trickles down to us. Uh, and right now, uh, the band is not currently providing WIC services, although they are hiring somebody, so we kind of are seeing like. A bit of an influx as we cover their cases for them until they get a new um person on board, but you can kind of see over the past few years. Our number of participants have just continued to go up, which, you know, depends on how you look at it, could be a bad thing cuz it means that people um. Are qualifying for WIC, and that means they may be in more of a financial challenge challenging situation, but it also means we're serving all of these people and they're getting connected to support that they need. To make sure that they kiddos and the mamas start off on the best foot possible, yeah.
Does it, does it mean there's more babies being born, or does it mean?
All the babies. Uh, just anecdotally, uh chatting with our WIC nurses, we've seen a lot of babies recently, lots of pregnant moms, so. I think it's a combination of all the things of babies being born, people being more aware of the resources available to them to connect to us, uh and also just. Maybe people are also struggling economically, so all of the above. Uh, and back in June, we had a new, oh yeah, go ahead.
Is WIC still operating out of Sandstone too?
Both places, yep. So we have one WIC nurse that's primarily down here, and one WIC nurse that's primarily up in Sandstone, although they beat.
Are the numbers kind of roughly the same?
Pine City generally has a higher caseload than Sandstone, but they both can cover both clients. Um, because most of everything we're doing right now is over the phone, so. It's, once the federal um public health emergency ends, then there's gonna be some transition back into the office as far as like. Coming in when they need to be certified or recertified, they'll come in, so we'll start seeing babies again.
So if they want to apply for WIC, they don't want to the office anymore than to apply for what they do at all.
I mean, they can come into the office if they want to, we're here, and we'll see them in person, we're just not requiring the the in-person visit. Um, but they can come in an office, they can do it online, they'll call up Lori, and Lori will help them and do all the things, so.
So it used to be like you weighed them and you measured them and you did all that, so does that stuff still, it can't happen then?
Not right now over the phone, nope, so, and that's all part of the federal waiver, so once that goes away. Which apparently is not happening in January, so probably April, and then we have so many months after that. Um, then they will start having babies come in for weights and whatnot, so.
It was a nice service cuz you could see that they were going and.
Yeah, well, and so they can still, if they want to, um, so if they say, hey, can somebody weigh my baby? We can have a home visiting nurse go out and weigh the baby, they can come into the office and we can weigh the baby, so it's not that we can't, it's just not a requirement right now. Yeah. Um, and then, yeah, so we had a new WIC nurse start in June, so she's up in Sandstone, her name's Maria, and she is amazing. So she's so good, so she's lovely, if you haven't met her, she's a fabulously, like, just so kind and positive of a human being, so. I just love that all our WIC mamas are gonna get to interact with her. So, family home visiting is another program that we have, it's a couple different grants, kind of not blended, cuz that's, that would make Kelly. Side-eye me, but we have a couple different pots of money that support our home visiting program. Uh, we saw a really obvious marked reduction in our visits that we had be from twenty nineteen into twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. For really obvious reasons, we were a little busy doing other things with covid, doing um. You know, case investigation, and then in twenty twenty-one, doing all of our vaccine clinics, which was significant, uh, we were one of the. Well, there were not that many providers in the county providing covid vaccines, so we did a lot. Um, and in twenty twenty-two, we're seeing our caseloads come bounce right back up, so we're doing really amazing, cuz it takes time to rebuild that case. Uh, caseload for all the families, um, and it is a fe- a mix of federal dollars and state funds. Uh, and fun little nugget, I'm gonna, we, over the past two years, have given out nine thousand seven hundred and. Some change vaccines between six nurses, so do that math. It's pretty amazing, so we have a really fantastic uh set of nurses on staff who are just. Trucker, they just chuck along, there you go, have a clicker.
Thank you so much, uh, so the statewide health improvement partnership, this is one of our programs. That we offer, and it is near and dear to me because it is the one that I work under. Uh, it is funded through the Minnesota Department of Health, so through Minnesota. And the overarching goal is that we are trying to partner with our communities to reduce chronic conditions, which then in turn. Reduce healthcare costs, so when we think about common chronic conditions that people are facing, there are a whole lot of modifiable risk factors. That we can help to improve, so that's anything from healthy eating to physical activity to. Overall wellbeing and tobacco cessation for commercial tobacco free. Um, so we partner with a wide variety of partners across four counties, so I work in a collaborative, it's Pine, I see Anika and Malax County. And so we serve schools, we partner with workplaces, communities at large, healthcare systems. And we provide a lot of technical assistance, so these partners can come to us with pretty much. Any question related to any of these topics, and we're really there to help support them. Um, we also share a wide variety of resources, and a big thing that is a a pull for our partners is that we have funding. So we have something called mini grants that our partners can apply for, that can really help push some of their work forward. Uh, it was kind of fun to listen to Extension because there were actually a number of those things that we actually funded with our ship grant, so. The hydroponics uh garden that's at East Central, that's something that was funded through us. Um, the raised beds in Pine City's community garden, that was something that was funded through us. Um, we currently have sixty active partners across the four counties, and that was something that took a significant hit. Um, also during the pandemic, we were probably around twenty-ish that were active from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, so we're excited to have a bunch of people back on board with us.
Can I just add that Pine County has also gotten some things from ship?
Yes.
So like we got the refrigerators, we got in the breast, um. What is it called, it's not a breastfeeding, cuz they're not feeding the.
On location one.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, Pine County has also gotten some of those grants, which is really nice that we've been able to utilize that.
Yep.
And we had a really good lead on it with healing.
So just some other public health programs that we are doing that I'll touch on, I'm gonna skip over the opioid for just a second, cuz that's gonna take a second. Uh, child and teen checkup is something we've been doing for years, it's just the outreach piece of it, so it really focuses on. An acronym that you don't care about, EPD, but it's focusing on well child checks and making sure that the kiddos get in for their well child appointments, and that goes all the way up to, you know, eighteen. Uh, we saw a really a pretty significant cut in funding for that, cuz the shift at the state giving a bunch of the money to um healthcare systems. Don't know what they're doing, so that's gonna be cool, so we got a cut in funding, but it's okay, we're still gonna keep doing all our outreach with the clinics and with families and making sure they have access to. Translators, transportation, anything like that, if they need um help connecting to that. Uh, public health emergency preparedness, or PEP, uh, right now. Obviously, as we transition out of pandemic response land that we've lived in for the past couple of years, we're really focusing on recovery. Uh, but also keeping an eye on just any other outbreaks that are happening, so as we see. She'll send out um health alerts about monkeypox, she'll send out alerts about all sorts of things, so she keeps an eye on all of those other things happening. Uh, disease prevention and control is kind of the bigger umbrella of infectious disease we focus on. Uh, so we're reviving our vaccines for children's program, we actually got out of the vaccines for children's game of right before covid. And now with the hit that childhood vaccination rates have seen over the past few years, just from lack of access, and then vaccine hesitancy and all that, our rates have come down. So we're getting back into it, uh, and it's just another way for us to offer the service to the community, so if kiddos are uninsured or underinsured. Um, we can get them connected to vaccines directly through us. Uh, the last little nugget here is the opioid settlement funds, it is a not small chunk of change, over eighteen years, so it is divided by eighteen. Uh, so public health was identified within the settlement as the chief strategist, uh, which is us basically to. which is us basically to guide how the money is spent with connection with the community and with guidance from steering committees that we create. We're not rushing to spend the money because there's not a deadline. When we have the money, it's our money, we can, we have rules on how we can spend it. But it's, there's not a time limit of you must spend X amount this year. So we want to, because we want to make sure it has a really positive, sustainable impact. Right now, the conversations we're having is really focused on youth activities and paying program fees at the school level to get kids more engaged in school, after school activities. Because we know that there's some really good data behind it, kids are engaged in the community, they're less likely to start, which is the goal, because we like prevention in public health. So we haven't committed any money or anything, that's just like kind of the frame of mind we're coming into this with and exploring at the moment. So if y'all have opinions, like feel free. But that's what we're focusing right now, is trying to focus more on prevention than on treatment or recovery. But who knows, it's eighteen years worth of dollars.
Sam, do we know for sure kind of how much we're gonna get in around seventy grand a year?
So I emailed Kelly and I was like, Kelly, help me because I have no idea how many dollars I'm getting and I can't decide anything until I know. So we're, and it's weird because there's actually a few more settlements that are coming that we don't know how much we're getting yet. Because other settlements are still being fleshed out with Walgreens and I don't know, other pharmacies.
You want me to read the emails?
Sure.
So between 2022 and 2023, because there's some advanced payments, we're gonna get nearly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then from 2025 to 2020, 2031, we'll get about eighty thousand dollars a year. And then from 2032 to 2038, we'll get about forty grand a year.
So it's front loaded, so we'll see. We haven't committed any dollars yet, yeah.
Kelly, go. Excuse me, go ahead.
So those estimate estimates do not include the additional settlements that may happen.
Those are just the ones that we have gotten information on.
If I heard Sam correctly, the years that we're getting eighty thousand, we could say we want to run this thing for fifteen years. We could set aside sixty thousand, knowing that later on we're gonna get forty. And have that money in the bank to make up the difference.
Yeah, we could, there's no rules around you must spend it by X date or anything, which is lovely.
And I'll just add that as far as coming up with ideas of how to utilize this money, we've been taking the time within our chemical health coalition meetings, just to kind of have a broader conversation about what are, what are other people's ideas on how to. So it's not just us sitting around a table thinking, this is a good idea. It's trying to bring in other people from around the county and their perspectives to brainstorm some ideas for this pot of money, so.
If you have other ideas, thoughts, ideas.
Or other ways to gather input. And you know, we're always trying to figure out great ways to get community input or your input or others within the county. So if you have suggestions around that, we'd love to hear it.
19, everybody's favorite subject. I only have one slide on it though, guys, so it's real exciting. Hi, well, kind of. We are kind of back to normal, like with an asterisk on it. Most staff are back to their primary jobs, they're not being diverted into doing things like a ton of vaccine clinics or case investigation or things like that. So most of our staff are doing their normal jobs now, which is nice. We did have a public health hotline that we started, turns out we always had this phone number, but we never knew about it. So there was this phone number that we took back. And it became a kind of a local COVID nineteen hotline that people would call and ask questions about how long am I supposed to stay home? Where can I get a vaccine, where can I get tested, things like that? And it since shifted into more of just a general public health hotline that people can call. And generally, they'll leave a message. But the nice thing is we put a little message in there about when our next vaccine clinics are, because they're not all the time anymore, just nice. But it's, it's kind of morphed and it's really nice service that people can just reach out to. Oh, yeah, there's our data, nine thousand seven hundred and eight vaccines, which is amazing. And now we are focusing more on recovery, we have funding from the state specifically around COVID response testing vaccines and recovery and both staff recovery and community recovery. So it's been funding a variety of different things that we're doing with our staff, but also in the community, it's funding blue zone stuff that we'll talk about in a little bit.
What kind of things are you doing for staff recovery? Because I know that that was hard.
All of my well-being presentation, no. So we so, like, it's funny, we didn't actually spend that much money on recovery. A lot of people will put staff time towards a couple, we've done a couple of retreats over the past few years, like just half day to a full day retreat where people can just come together and connect and step away from all the stress of COVID and kind of heal a bit as a group. So a lot of it's actually time of them for them to build that. We do access to trainings around healing and recovery and mental health and all that. But actually, like, we haven't actually spent that many dollars on it. Most of the dollars have been spent on more community recovery. So, but we do the four day work week, we do different ways to help build connection for our teams. It just doesn't cost money, which is kind of nice. Oh, we did pay for the call map for everybody for, so we offered that up to actually all of HHS, whoever wanted it. It's a mindfulness app on your phone for a year, we paid for a one-year subscription for everybody and it's lovely. So we did pay for that.
Okay. So I'm sure you all have heard me talk about this at some point in time. But within public health, we do something called the community health assessment every five years. And it's just our opportunity to dig a little bit deeper, figure out what's happening in Pine County where the biggest need is specifically around health issues. So we started this process back in 2018. And we actually utilized our health equity grant at the time to form our advisory committee, which Mr. Holland sat on and a variety of other community members. But we used this group to review a wide variety of health indicator data specific to Pine County from a wide variety of surveys. Just to again, see where's, where's the most need? And then from that point, we, we take all of that data and that perspective and we start to prioritize and we start to identify, okay, where are we seeing the largest health issues? So we used a number of tools to help us in that process, we did surveys. We utilized something called the Hamlin matrix. And then we eventually moved to a root cause analysis where we just dug a little bit deeper into, once we identified what the top health issues are, why, why are they happening in Pine County specifically? And those conversations are really what helped us identify the next bullet, which is the priority action areas. So as we were having conversations around, why are we seeing high obesity rates? Why are we seeing mental health? Why are we seeing substance use? And we were identifying some root causes, we were seeing a lot of common themes popping up. So we were able to bucket those themes into priority action areas. And then lastly, again, a big thing for us is that we don't want to just sit here and make these decisions and interpret this data in a certain way. We really want to make sure that we're reaching out to our community and asking for their input. So we held, I think it was a series of six, community action planning meetings where we were in Sandstone and Pine City multiple times and invited community members, organizations, pretty much anybody and everybody that we could try to invite to come in and to hear a little bit about, okay, these are the priority, priority health issues that we've identified. Can you help us with next steps of, okay, well, how do we impact them? So we asked them three questions, we said, what in Pine County are we doing really well at? And this isn't just public health, this is as a county as a whole, are we, what are we doing really, really well at? And then we asked them to identify, well, what are we doing okay at? But we could be doing better. And then our last bucket was, what are we not doing at all that we absolutely should be doing? And we use that information to help us kind of further strengthen what our plan was going to be for how we were going to impact these areas. So what we found was that our top health issues are mental health, obesity and substance use. And then as we were having those conversations with the root cause analysis and asking why in Pine County specifically, we found that trauma came up a lot in conversation and in responses. An example I can give is that quarterly probation puts on an alcohol education class for our DWI offenders and myself, the sheriff, county attorney, Kelly, who's from Empower for our treatment services, we each present for an hour to this group of individuals and we just did this on Saturday. And during my presentation, I give a little bit of information around the statistics for our usage rates of alcohol specifically for adults and youth in the county. And I posed the question, why do you guys think we have this rate here? And one of the individuals, he said, you know what? My son actually committed suicide, died by suicide two years ago. And that's when my usage of alcohol really started to increase. And he's like, you know, I don't really know what you would identify that as. And I said, that's a trauma, right? That's, that's a form of trauma that you experienced and it was just such a nice tie-in to other conversations that we had been hearing about, you know, some of the root causes to issues like substance abuse. Another one of the root causes that we've been hearing is lack of connection. And then another example is lack of access to healthy foods and there are a variety of other root causes. So again, we used those answers to kind of group and bucket, what are going to be our priority areas? Something else that we learned though, is that we have a ton of really great partnerships across Pine County. There's so much good that's happening and this is the tiniest of tiny lists of what some of those strong partnerships look like. But there's so much good happening and there's a lot of opportunity for us to be learning more about what others are doing and playing off of each other, collaborating, so really, really great input that we found. And then lastly was this concept that instead of just saying, okay, what's a goal we can do specific to improving mental health or obesity or substance use? We really wanted to tie it back to those root causes and, and try to think a little more upstream of how can we impact the root cause that then can impact mental health, obesity, substance use? And then really just collaborating with the community in that process. So the main focus areas that we came up with after all of that happened was that we really wanted to improve the mental health and well-being of our community members. We wanted to increase opportunities for social connection. And then we wanted to improve economic security, all while, you know, continuously reassessing and connecting with the community to kind of keep this process going. So here's what we got, we got some goals. Building resilience through a more trauma-informed community, connecting communal resources, working better together, so really, really understanding what others are doing and how we can collaborate to work together and and make people aware of what other people are doing. Increasing our presence in our community through outreach and increasing opportunities for our community to feel included and connected. So those were the, the goals underneath those priority action areas. Okay.
Brief nugget, so the fun, the interesting thing about our ship that most people, most counties don't do is a lot of times they will tie in, here's our priority area, it's obesity. Here's our goal, here's our strategy, and it's very, very linear. And we really saw the overlap between our different priority areas and how they all intersect. Like you can't just, you know, focus on connection without touching on mental health. Like they're so innately linked. So our goals are not actually tied to a specific like priority area. We know that if we do these things, they're going to impact all three of our priorities. And so it's a slightly different way of doing the chip than most people do.
Yep.
So.
Yeah.
That was all.
Yeah, no, perfect. And, and I think it's really important to note that this obviously all happened prior to COVID nineteen. So the next slide is actually going to talk a little bit about, well, how did, how did COVID have an impact on some of those things that we had identified? So we just through my ship grant, put out a survey. It's the East Central Regional Health Survey that asks a wide variety of health questions. And one of the questions was on specifically the impact of COVID on a number of different areas. But something that we wanted to know was on social connection, because that was one of our areas that we had identified was of real importance and was a root cause to a lot of health issues. So unfortunately, we had thirty-eight point four percent of respondents say that it absolutely did impact their social connection. So it just heightens our awareness that this is an issue and it's definitely still something that we want to be focusing our time and effort on. So just gonna throw that nugget out there. And then we also wanted to take a peek on mental health. So while we can't say that COVID nineteen necessarily caused the, the increase in depression, anxiety, other mental health disorders and any mental health disorder, there's definitely a correlation there. So the dark blue-ish green color is the answers that we had in 2018. And then in 2022 is the yellow, so this is respondents reporting any depression, anxiety, other mental health disorder or any, any diagnosis of mental health. So it's definitely a concern.
Where did you reach out for your surveys?
So this is something that we actually collaborate with MDH and they have their randomized way that they send out surveys, their paper copies, and then they also had a QR code option. So it's, it's random sent out to respondents within Pine County over the age of eighteen. So again, these were concerns of ours before COVID nineteen happened. They're definitely concerns of ours after we exit COVID. And I think this too.
So obviously substance use is something that we also were concerned about prior to COVID. And this is just a snapshot of hospital discharge data. So why did somebody go into the hospital specifically related to substance use? And you can just see that over, it starts in 2016 and it scoots up to 2020, it's the latest data is only 2020. But you can see that heroin, and this is Pine County specific, opioids excluding heroin and heroin, both saw just kind of this really steady but noticeable increase and then this nice spike in 2020, it's not nice, it's just noticeable. And then I, I don't know why MDH does this, but that's stimulants, but it doesn't include meth. So I'm like, oh, I want that data. So we are seeing heroin and opioids within our community. You can see on this next slide though, oh, go ahead.
On the previous slide. Number of non-fatal overdoses. So how do you capture that universe? Is that non-fatal overdoses that are hospitalized?
Yep, because this is specifically discharge data, so it's ones who are brought to the hospital.
What about the ones that save themselves with their own?
So, yes, we, we, I'm sure somewhere somebody figured out how to collect that data, but we don't have that unless. No. But I do think there somewhere, when you get, because this is such small numbers, it's really hard to find like linkages. But if you can compile the data, you can see in counties, states where there's an increase in a lock zone access, a decrease in overdose deaths, so you're gonna see that. Yeah, so our deaths were up in 2020, they, as far as I know this, or in 2021, as far as I know, this year they are lower than they were, so knock on wood. Yeah.
So you said meth isn't included in this?
And the stimulants, no, but they're gonna be in the next slide.
Okay, so, okay.
I, I wish I could make the data, tell me what I wanted. This is what I got. But this next one is specifically around treatment. So how many people in Pine County were admitted for inpatient treatment for these substances? So we still see alcohol is a pretty significant cause for people going in for treatment, but meth is the winner here. And then opioids is still a significant part, but it's just, we're just seeing more meth than we are opioids, which is not a trend that has shifted in the past few years.
These are discreet, so if someone was in treatment for methamphetamine and alcohol, they would only show up in one or the other.
That is a great question, I don't actually know the answer to.
I think that's correct.
I think that's true.
Minnesota is your source, yeah, I believe so.
So if you add those numbers, that's the total number of people who went in treatment in Pine County.
Correct.
Doesn't, that seems like a really big number.
So some of those aren't doing both.
Right, so we'll have to go back and look, but the last time that I looked at this data source was exactly to the point that you're saying is that you could be there for multiple reasons, but we're only marking you off for one.
I do believe there's, you have to indicate a primary substance, while people recognize that there are poly substance users. So yeah, meth is the number one. And then alcohol and then opioids. So, and this is any.
How many people we have over the age of? There's a lot of.
A lot of people, and this is not necessarily inpatient in Pine County, they're just Pine County residents, so they could be out of the county at a different facility.
And what's the age range?
Ooh, eighteen plus, I would assume.
Did heroin fall in on that?
Opioids.
Okay.
So it's a subset of opioids.
Down and heroin wins.
So the, the other interesting thing about this data is because the last one is in twenty twenty, some of it might just be an access issue. Where because beds weren't available, things were shut down that I, I'm really curious about twenty twenty-one data, because I'm, my guess is that it's gonna go right back up. Um, and that people just couldn't get in. I don't know for sure.
The new Thursday.
So um, this is also from our community survey that Haley did with SHIP. Uh, and just, we just asked people, what is their perception of their highest community concerns? What are they worried about as they think about the community? And the number one was bullying, which I thought was really interesting, thirty-five percent marking bullying as a concern. Uh, adult obesity right underneath it. And then parenting with inadequate or poor parenting skills is something that just shy of a third of people are concerned about. Uh, and then alcohol abuse for adults and then illegal drug use for youth. So those are just what is floating around in the community's brain as just, this is something we're worried about. Um, which I just think is just a really interesting snapshot of how people are feeling.
Is that typical statewide? Are we atypical?
So that's a great question. So again, this survey that we conduct covers Pine, Sandy, Canadian, and Mille Lacs County. Um, this year I Sandy did a separate server survey, so they weren't a part of this, but I, what I will say was parenting with inadequate or poor parenting skills was seen among the other two counties. Bullying was, bullying was unique to us. Um, and adult obesity, alcohol abuse, illegal drug use, those have been kind of top ones that we've seen in previous surveys. Uh, the addition of bullying and, and the parenting with inadequate or parenting skills was actually a new option this go around. Um, so the bullying was unique to us though, that we didn't see in the other counties.
But are these forced choice questions? These are fill in the blank, what do you think?
They're, they're, they're a listed option.
Was there a breakdown on the type of bullying? Was it like online bullying or face-to-face bullying?
Yeah, no, just bullying was a standalone.
I wonder if that's why it's so much bigger is because you do have online bullying and you've got in-person bullying. So you've got the bullying in school, but you've got you look at any post that you're on and people who are, are nasty because they know that they're never gonna see you in person.
Yeah.
So people have become really snarky.
Yeah.
Because they're unidentifiable.
Right.
So yeah, I think that that is getting to be more and more.
Well, and then that's, it's not necessarily just youth that are being bullied, it can be adults that are being bullied, so.
Some of that can lead to the bottom one.
Yeah, yes, yes. Because, yep.
And the parenting issues might lead to bullying. Um, it's all connected. So, yep, so that's just what people are kind of seeing and feeling within the community. So where are we going? What are we, what are we trying to do about this? Uh, the big thing that we're talking about right now is Blue Zones. Everybody should have gotten an invite, please RCP.
What was that again?
January eleventh.
There we go.
Thank you.
Yes, it's at Pine Tech, their fabulous partner. Um, so just to really quick overview for those who um, couldn't make it to our presentation back in May. Uh, Blue Zones is really focused on nine areas uh, and really doing sustainable changes through um, people, places and policies. So working where people congregate, working with individuals, but also really working on policies and bigger systems impact. Um, if you'll notice though, because people are always worried about, oh, they're just gonna tell me to eat all my veggies and I know I have to eat vegetables. Um, yes, that is a piece of it. Eating wisely is a thing, diet impacts all sorts of things. Um, but one, two, three, four, five, six of them have absolutely nothing to do with food. Unless you count wine, which is technically food. But the point of it is actually to get together and be in community. Um, the wine at five is really about community more so than the wine itself, because you can also call it friends at five. Um, but a lot of it is really about building community and connection to others and finding those people who can help you um, just feel connected and supported and all that. So that's, there, there's a lot of pieces to it way beyond diet. Um, and we just see all of the economic impact, the healthcare cost impact, there's a a lot of ripple effects of putting these changes into place. And it's all voluntary, guys. We don't have to, we're not forcing anybody. Um, so just a cool, oh, you're not sharing your, your sound, because I forgot that I made that a thing. Sure, does it take a long time?
It's absolutely necessary.
No. We can send it out.
I can send it out. Please hold. It is a good video. It's only like two minutes.
But the health-conscious mayor found inspiration thousands of miles away in remote places where people live longer and healthier than anywhere else on earth. National Geographic fellow Dan Buettner discovered the Blue Zones are made here. Found inspiration thousands of miles away. In remote places where people live longer and healthier than anywhere else. People here are always on the move.
You're doing a great job.
Emphasizing the point.
Just. I, I just wanted the one sound, not two sounds.
Well, he's playing with sound. Okay.
Yeah.
January eleventh, what time?
Yes. So there's a community presentation where they're gonna come in and kind of talk about the the economic and the fiscal impact of Blue Zones and the impact it can have in the community. And that is at ten, ten?
Ten.
Yep. Um, and then the focus groups are at two?
Yes, and we'll be sending out another email today too. So you will have a ranked one in your inbox.
It might be in your junk box, which we're discovering is a thing. So that's why we're sending it.
We're sending it again today. Yeah.
No, we, I got it.
Oh, okay.
Because I think I got the lead happy one day.
It's okay.
That happens. Yes. So, and the focus group is gonna be really, we really want people to come to the focus group and the presentation. But um, the focus group is we were really gonna hear the voice of the community and it's not just gonna be us saying, hey, this is what we should be working on. Um, so it's kind of similar to the chip, but bigger and with a Blue Zones lens. We can give up on the sound if you want. It's okay. Okay. Working on. Um, so it's kind of similar to the chip, but bigger and with a Blue Zones lens. You, we can give up on this.
Well, the issue is, is that we are live streaming with YouTube in the background.
Oh, we'll just skip it. It's okay.
Being on Chrome is also doing.
Is not happy about it.
That's okay.
All right, it's okay. We'll skip past the video. It's a good video. We'll sign up.
Good video. You can, you can go look at it yourself.
Yeah.
Have looked at it.
Yeah. If you search Fort Worth, Texas, Blue Zones, you'll find uh, this. So it is good. I'm gonna click past and hope it doesn't play the video. There we go. Oh, too far. Now I'm clicker happy. Uh, all right. So where are we sitting with Blue Zones? So back in May twenty twenty-two, uh, we had the Blue Zones presentation where Dan Buettner Jr. Came in and kind of explained everything. Uh, we did have a kind of leadership roundtable with a leadership from all sorts of different nonprofits. Um, healthcare county was there to talk about the, the economic impact of this as well. Uh, and that was really just to gauge community interest of would people be interested in doing this? Because it cannot be me coming in and saying, you should do A, B, and C. It's very much groundswell interest of if people want to buy into this and find value in it. And they didn't, because we had over a hundred people come, which was very exciting. Uh, it had, it was a great vibe of a room too. So we really, it was a great day. Uh, so in January tenth and eleventh, we're gonna be doing the community assessment and site visit. So the eleventh is the community presentation and the focus group. The tenth is where we're actually working with the Blue Zones team to do a windshield tour of the county. And we're really hoping it doesn't snow uh, to drive them around to the different uh, places. And we're hoping to find some a few volunteers for us to kind of be the navigators for the town. So somebody who was born and raised in Pine City to like show off how amazing Pine City is. And then hop up to Hinckley and so on and so forth, to just really show off the towns, plural for them. So after that is all done, by May, we'll be receiving the assessment and feasibility study, which is this like two hundred and fifty-page document. It's amazing. Uh, where it really goes over the data of wellbeing in our county, of where we're sitting. Uh, they pull all sorts of data from Gallup and things like that uh, to really give us a snapshot of where we're sitting. And then give us really solid uh, sustainable choices. Just, it's just a menu of, hey, if you want to work on building movement into your community, here's twenty options to make that happen. And we don't have to do any of them, but it gives us really a menu of things that as people are interested in making changes um, at the community level, at an organizational level, in the schools, wherever it is, it really gives us a great roadmap. And then it's also gonna talk about if we wanted to become a full-fledged Blue Zones project, what that could look like and how much that would cost, which is not cheap. But it's really great. Um, but either way, we will have this document, no matter what, to steer us towards sustainable changes to make, making the healthier choice easier. So, yeah, either way, we win.
I, I think one, one reason why I think this is exciting is we've had these health indicators that we've looked at for a number of years. And I don't think we've moved the needle.
No.
Did we move it at all?
We're like the second lowest county in, for county health rankings.
So I, I think there's some opportunity to, to be better. I, I think, I think we're about to see that happen in broadband. Uh, where we have floundered for fifteen years or more and now, you know, uh, actually Leslie gave us some sense, since we, if we want to put a stake in the ground and say, here's where we really made a difference. We went to the, we signed up for the um, Blandon Broadband Initiative Conference. We went through that program. Since that time, we've seen uh, fifteen million dollars worth of investment in Pine County for broadband in this many homes of, you know, potentially now are going to be served. So hoping we can get to that so we can say, you know, we had no public transportation in this colony. We signed up with Arrowhead Bus and we became the poster child for public, rural public transportation. So I think we, we have the potential to, to change.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, we definitely share that sentiment. And we, we came into the whole community health assessment, community health improvement planning process through discussions with others of, yeah, we have to start doing something different because we really haven't seen much progress. And something that is exciting to note is that you look at it, I don't know if it's Fort Worth, it's, it's one of the Blue Zone examples. They actually give an, it, an example of how they had a really poor county health ranking. And after they implemented so many Blue Zones things, they had a significant uh, jump in their, in their county health ranking. So we see a lot of potential as well.
Yep. So they are Blues, or Blue Zones is actually a Minnesota organization. They're based down in Minneapolis, which is kind of neat. And they had their very first Blue Zones project in Albert Lee, Minnesota. But they have not come back since. And it's very much because of what the community needs to invite them in and bring them in. They are not gonna go around and pick a community. So they're in seventy-some communities in the US, I want to say. Um, but they haven't come back to Minnesota yet and they really want to. And they want Pine County to kind of, they're like, yeah, let's like stake the flag of like, we're next. So.
Can you do your windshield time? Are you going to like Carrick and Nickerson and Denham? And I mean, are you, you know, because I think of these little towns that don't have a lot of, you know, I, I went to my local grocery store the other day and I bought a bag of lemons and within two days they were moldy and gross. You know, so I mean, that's, that's kind of the stuff that we're, I'm, and I'm in a town, you know, so I think of these communities that are out further. Um, it would be interesting to see how they'll be able to help.
So I think one of the things to note is that they are doing some pretty intensive kind of digging about Pine County. So learning about access issues, right? How we have significant food deserts within the county. It can be really difficult for people to get to food. So I, I don't know that they will necessarily get to all of the little nooks and crannies in the, in the really small communities. Uh, but they're certainly doing their due diligence of kind of finding out things that can be impacting those communities. Um, it's not to say that it's not going to happen, but that's just another side of things that is, that's taking kind of happening behind the scenes by their team. Um, for sure, they'll obviously hit, you know, all of the big main um, towns within, or cities within the county. Uh, but I don't know exactly what the plan is. And that's maybe something to bring back to them and ask, you know, will you get to see kind of some of the smaller.
Excited to hear what yours.
Yeah.
So excited. Yeah, we'll prob, I'm, I have to assume we'll probably hit a few tiny, tiny.
Right.
Kind of little hamlets, but not all of them, just because we're big. So yeah, I'm very excited about what's to come with Blue Zones. Come on, Quicker. Here we go. Uh, other things that are coming up for us in uh, public health land that is not Blue Zones, family resource centers. Um, I think some of y'all went and heard Becky and the, the, the quirky thing we're doing in Pine County that's different than most places is we're putting the family resource center under the public health umbrella, which really commonly it goes under social services because it is, I mean, if you think about it, it's more direct support to communities, which generally public health is more prevention, community-focused. Um, so having that public health lens within the family resource center and built into it from the get-go, I think is gonna be a really cool shift for how they go. So I'm learning all sorts of family resource center stuff I had no idea. So it'll be something new for me to learn. Um, so that is coming. We're working on hiring somebody soon, once it's approved. Uh, obviously focusing on staff, mental health and wellbeing. I kind of touched on that earlier with all of our Jess and I are going on the, the road often now for people to just be like, how did you do that? Uh, like going to the extension conference and I just spoke at, it was supposed to be Jess, but she was out. Her and I both spoke at the AMC conference about it. So it's been uh, very well received as far as I know from our staff. And um, also just looking at other grant opportunities, I'm waiting to hear back on, it's called the Prep Grant, uh, which is all around working with youth uh, around making good, healthy choices, specifically focusing on sexual health. So working with the ALCs to do that. Fingers crossed, that would be lovely. If we could get in there and just talk more about having good, healthy relationships and making good choices. Um, so we're always open to other grant ideas, but it's just a matter of, does it make sense for the community? Oh, the other last thing I will mention about grants is uh, so we did actually carve out some ARPA dollars for Blue Zones. And that is not paying for the site visit. We're paying for that through our COVID recovery dollars, because it very much is how do we recover from COVID? And that's gonna really steer us into a healthier post-COVID land. Um, but we do have ARPA dollars set aside to actually do the things that will be identified in this process. So it'll help pay for staff to support the community and help them figure out what policies can they make in an organization, change to support their staff or school changes or things like that. It's really gonna help pay to actually get the things off the ground. So thanks for the ARPA dollars, guys. So just a little nugget of a quote, we can't live only for ourselves. A thousand fibers connect us with our fellow men. So it's, public health is very, very much about, yes, we can support an individual, but really we need to support the community because everybody is connected. And if we can support the community, individuals will thrive from that. So. I mean, y'all ask lots of questions, but I love questions. So please ask me more questions. But you don't have to. I won't judge you. I do love questions.
The dental clinic.
Yeah.
Can we just touch on that?
I sure can.
Where it's being awkward though.
So a couple of years ago, we started partnering with Children's Dental Service to offer dental services in both Pine City and Sandstone. Eventually transitioned to Just Sandstone because the building space was better than um, the old building that we had. Um, and now, very recently, they are off, we're still, it's still built into the public health budget to do children's dental services once a month, um, or two days a month, they're back to back. Um, they're going into east central schools and it's just a way to just start the family resource center process of building the mentality of, oh, we can go here to get connected to services. So it's um, it, they, they bill Medicaid, uh, which is really hard to find in our county, uh, dentists who bill Medicaid. Um, and they have a sliding scale fee and they serve kiddos and adults now, which is a new thing. Um, and they're really, they're a great partner. So they go all over. They work in other counties too. It's not just us, but.
But for here, they're still just in Sandstone though.
Mm-hmm. Once a month, they'll do one day of preventative, more dental services and one day of um, more uh, restorative work. So like crowns, cavities.
I do think too, though, after the educational leadership meeting, um, they have some time where they're gonna be going up in the Willow River. Um, and I just had an email this morning from a student who worked a lot of dental pain or teeth pain and they're being connected to the clinic. The swim room versus theirs. But that'll be, we're not, we're not associated with that, but we'll, we're just doing some other own stuff as a result of the educational leadership. And so they're connected.
Okay. Perfect. Cool. Who knew?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Got one thing left. Pay plan.
So. Yes, you want a quick recess? Um, so back in October, uh. The, this was discussed at the Personnel Committee, the concept of doing a. Two percent performance increase at fifteen years. Uh, I went to the County Board, there was some discussion, I think it was. Placed here, uh, so there could be a little more in-depth uh discussion amongst commissioners, so I don't have new materials prepared. Um, we have implemented the program in the collective bargaining agreement with two groups, with the sheriff's deputies. And then also with the jailers and dispatchers. And we know that other uh units are interested. We actually received a signed MOU from the HHS Supervisors. Um, just waiting for us to sign. Um, so they, you know, they presume that should the county. Make a broader policy that we would then uh. Make that available to the other unions, and I think that's a fair presumption, so. Um, the cost to do it amongst the non-union employees would be about twenty thousand dollars a year.
The union employees have stuff built in already, don't they? Are those gone?
Not over fifteen years.
That's right, they were gone on.
Yeah, there were, there was.
The deputies were gone.
Yeah, there was longevity in the contracts. I think all of that was worked out before I started. And so we have always had of, of. A no answer to longevity. The two percent performance was. In essence, it's rewarding long-serving employees, but it's building in a performance component. And so I think that in talking to the sheriff, um, that was useful, right? Because that forces the performance conversation. Uh, and I know. That every employee who had fifteen years did not necessarily get two percent. When they hit fifteen years because they did not have a. Adequate performance review. And so that's why the, the language in the contracts allows for it to be reevaluated on an annual basis, so if you get. If you get zero or one percent at fifteen years, you could come back at sixteen years or seventeen years and get that other uh remaining portion.
That's a total of two percent. So you know, I said in at the AMC conference, I wanted to go things and they said, don't do performance reviews, stop them there.
It's like.
Yeah, that was, that was Gordon Graham, the risk, the risk guy. If you go to his website, he will have the performance review form that he recommends. It's, his message, I think, was truncated in his speech to what his intent was.
Okay.
So it's don't do performance reviews that say, hey, congratulations, you survived another year, you're doing a great job.
No, do an evaluation.
Yeah.
So. I've never been a big proponent of, of uh longevity. Hey, but. I understand we're in a different. Place than we used to be in the world. And maybe, maybe. My mind can wrap my head around. The fact that. There, there is. There is value in paying for institutional knowledge. Especially if the person is performing above. The average. And we want those people to stay here for. I mean, we give a lot, a lot of retirement clocks to people that have been here thirty plus years. There's a. Value to having those people around.
I like the performance. Because you can't just sit at your desk.
I like performance. I don't like just handing out money.
And the longevity was, they just handed it out.
Yeah.
But I, I do like performance.
And it's up to us. Through our supervisors to make sure they're doing a, a good performance review.
That's what I was gonna say, we're gonna have to have a, a training with the supervisors on, you know, what's expected with that so that they all. I think, you know, as an employee, we had talked about going to performance reviews and, and doing. And the thing was, nope, I have a boss that thinks that if they don't give anybody any money, that they're gonna get more down the road and. Um, or no, I have a boss that finds the bad in everything that you do. So if you have the bosses working together so that they can be consistent, I think that that would make a big difference too.
Yeah, and we, we have. On the non-union side, it's all pay for performance. There's no steps that are automatic. On the. Contract side, two of our uh. Unions, the HHS Supervisors are a hundred percent pay for performance. And the highway supervisors are a step system with a performance at the top, and so I, I don't know off the top of my head, is it? Six steps or four steps, but they have, the highway supervisors have a number of steps. And then when they get to that point, it's based on performance. They can get uh increases to the top of the scale. So it's not, the performance piece is not totally foreign to the organization.
How? How do you make sure it's just not a rubber stamp thing? You know, when it comes through? That's, that's gonna be the. I think that's. Where I say is. That's our job. That's, that's. It works. Through a personnel committee, when you start seeing. Everybody from one department automatically getting a performance. Best in the business. I mean, you gotta start looking at those and saying. This person really. Subscribing to what we're saying.
You, you can come up to you can be by the microphone.
Jackie Quivers, Tony Char Manager, if I could just make a comment uh for the contracts that do allow, that currently allow the two percent performance increase. The employee does not get that actual increase unless a satisfactory performance review is turned in, so. So just to assure you that there's been no automatic, no one's automatically received it, the work has to be done. There has to be that performance review to back that up.
I like what Dave was saying too, that um if I went in the first year and they said, ah, you just don't have your stuff together. I would know that the next year I better get my stuff together, and so if I got, you know, a half a percent that year because it wasn't quite there, and then the next year, they said, okay, you're doing better. So you're gonna get one percent, you know, that I still have that chance to get that last half, so it's not a done deal at that one time. You can still work towards that. I like that idea too.
And the. The, the universe of people that this applies to are only people who've been here fifteen years, right? So presumably, if you've made it fifteen years, you're not the worst performing.
Right.
Right? That, that, that would really reflect poorly on us. Right, I mean, I just, from, from a reality perspective, I don't, I don't, with the unions that we've negotiated it with, it's not. Only the top ten percent get it. It's, if you're gonna continue in employment, you should be getting it or you're on a performance improvement plan.
And I was with Steve. I wasn't really a big. Longevity. Um, cuz I figured if someone was here five years, they're not gonna leave. Um, type of deal, but. It does give people something to work for as well. Um, where if they get topped out, then there's something. A little bit more if you wanna work a little harder and be better at your job. Um, one of the things we, one of the classes I went to was, it'd say up to two times a person's salary. It costs if they leave um to retrain somebody and uh. I think that's pretty valuable and. Do we have a lot of people that are at that fifteen year mark? Or close to it?
Well, um. It, it depends on which unit you're looking in, but I think we do uh demonstrate some longevity throughout the county. And the study that we did, the twenty thousand dollars that Dave referenced would be for the non-union group, so there's a fair amount in the non-union group. That have more than fifteen years.
Do, do you know how many non-union employees there are?
I did when I did the report. I don't recall.
I'm trying to think, is it like seventy-ish?
I would say that's a fair number.
But, but the number, I think you had a sheet that.
Yeah, I think it's, I think I have a sheet on my desk.
How many, how many were at fifteen years and it was like? Or more, it was like fifteen or twelve or something. Well, it must be if it's. Two percent, that's gonna be twenty thousand, it's gotta be down in that ten or twelve.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think this, this discussion really stems from how competitive is our pay? And how important of a piece of the attract and retain employee puzzle is pay, right? Because it's not just pay, it's the whole menu of pay and benefits plus working conditions. Uh, that attract and retain employees. Uh, but we know that. Our, you know, a number of our neighboring counties are doing compensation studies. The Personnel Committee just looked at attorney and sheriff salaries and, and kinda has a flavor for what are others paying. We. Genuinely. Are kinda in the middle of the pack for a lot of our positions, right? We're not woefully underpaid. Um, but we've had the conversation in uh generally around negotiation time when we're talking about colas, right? And if we're, if we're successful in limiting our colas year after year after year. What we find out is when we did the Springstead Study, we're so far behind the market that that's something that we then have to adjust. And I was talking to uh. The um. Cass County Administrator at the AMC Conference and we're all, you know, what are your colas for the upcoming years? And casted five percent, five percent and five percent for the next three years because they feel that they are so out of whack with. Their neighbor to the south, Crow Wing County, uh, and then Beltrami to the north or northwest, right? That they really have felt that pressure. So, I mean, I, that, that compensation study is kinda in that same bullet on the agenda because that's just hanging out there at some point. Uh, we'll need to refresh that study as well, so I don't, there's no. There's no clear. You must do this. On this two percent. I just know that um the sheriff. Uh, thought that it was very helpful for him to have that negotiated into the two contracts that uh represent most of his folks. And. We know that it's, you know, there was some desire to have additional conversations, so how's that for a, a non-direction? Cuz it's hard, cuz it costs money.
Well, if somebody already has fifteen years and say they're sitting at seventeen and this gets bored in, are they just gonna be automatic?
They have to get a performance review.
Good.
So, and in our high-performing departments, those are done on an annual basis, right? And if it's implemented and you've had a successful performance review, then your supervisor could validate that and say, yes. If you haven't, right, if there's no documentation, you would not just get it, your supervisor would have to. Sit down and have that performance review.
So as far as our board goes. Is there some sort of checks or balances or something like that that we, so the supervisor is the one that. Uh, is there someone that, you know, is it Jackie that takes a look at this and says? Hey, how come this whole department just got hammered through, no questions asked? And then maybe dives a little deeper into it or, I mean, I think we got really good supervisors that really.
And so the performance reviews do go to HR to get into the personnel files currently today. And so we do have, you know, a number of folks who are on pay for performance. All of the non-union. All of the HHS Supervisors. And then the, the highway supervisors who are above the step system and into the performance system, so I think we have that system. Existing.
I re, I review all of the performance reviews that come in.
So in the military, we have this system where. I wrote a, a review on Josh. And I. If it was, if I did it at ten o'clock at night and just to get it done. Somebody they knew and they sent it back and said. If you can't do any better than this, maybe you shouldn't be the. In that position anymore. Because. Uh, I mean, there were some real teeth in that, I think David will attest to that in the NCOER program is that, you know. You. You had to put some due diligence into those things and I, is that, I think what Josh is asking, do we have a? Program set up that make assures the board that somebody is watching over this program? I can speak to like the law enforcement. The eval has to happen in the car with a person or out in the field, I think. And it's gonna take time. But every, every department I know. Does it. Except Pine County.
But it wouldn't be all done at one time either, correct? It would be done when you have your anniversaries.
Yeah.
So I mean, that would.
But it does take time, but that's why we have. Sergeants.
We have them.
I mean, that's why we've set that structure up, that's part of their job.
Yeah, and just, just to clarify though, sergeants are not supervisors. Right? So sergeants give input to the supervisor. And that, I mean, that's a, that's an FLSA. Thing, right? That sergeants are not supervisors under the law, so I just wanted to be sure of that.
But they have training guys that can ride.
Oh, absolutely, they give input.
They can do the.
Yeah, in the, I mean, I guess to, to satisfy the question, Steve. I can't sit here and say, yep, absolute, every evaluation in the last year or three years is an A plus. I will say that I spent a significant amount of my time when I talk to my direct reports about. Their employees and the performance of their departments, right? Because that's what we are. We're a service organization. Uh, and so I'm, I'm very satisfied with the quality of the reviews that are done by my direct reports. Which I think sets the tone for the organization.
So Mr. Sheriff, I got something I guess.
Yeah.
I guess a question for David. You said that Cas County. Is offering five percent.
Five percent colas.
Cola increases. For the next three years. And then you said Crow Wing County is offering.
I don't know what Crow Wing is offering.
Okay.
Josh.
The neighboring county.
Yeah, Josh, Josh said that they were losing employees to their neighbors. Crow Wing and Beltrami, and so they're trying to increase their wages to be more competitive.
Okay, uh, Cass County. Matt just, he said could speak on behalf of the uh Sheriff's Department. Terry made a comment, she. Speaking on employees. I'll speak on behalf of the taxpayer. Cass County right now on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. The county tax portion. Is six hundred and eighty-three dollars a year. And Pine County. The same home is. Fourteen hundred and twenty-two dollars a year.
But you can't compare them because we have different demographics.
So I just guess, I'm just trying to guess, when you raise something down here. It's gonna raise our taxes, correct?
Yeah, I mean, spending has the impact of putting pressure on the tax levy.
Alright, that's what I thought.
You know, we've had the same issue with Carlton County and there's no way that we will ever be able to pay what Carlton County pays.
Carlton, probably, but actually. They pay nineteen hundred and forty-four dollars a year on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home.
Yeah, but.
They're not last, but they're next to last.
Yeah. But in the, they have different monies that come in than we have that come in too, so I mean, it, all that kinda comes together, makes a picture. But yeah, I mean, we've lost how many employees to Carlton County or Kinabik, we lost them to Kinabik County. But there's no way that we could pay those people what they were paying them to get them either.
I, I think our goal here is to, is to. Recognize the fact that we have. Good employees.
Right.
And that. They're not gonna. We can't compete with. Henopin and Ramsey probably for pay. We can. Certainly have a better work environment and we can be competitive, paid competitive. And I think that's our. What. What this thing is all about, so that we're competitive in the competitive market.
Which is why we have the senior employees that we have.
Right.
And I guess I'd add too is, you know, recognition is one thing, doing a performance review. Not only it holds the employee to the fire, but it also says, hey, they told me I'm doing a great job. Okay, on top of that, I'm getting a little bit better pay on top of that, so. Um, it's not, we try to pat everybody on the back and say everybody's doing a good job, but if you. Hold a little bit of compensation to it. I'm a firm believer money isn't everything. Uh, and. Uh, and, and if, if I didn't like my job, you're not gonna do it for whatever anybody pays you, and we all know people that have left and, and have probably left their job that probably paid more, but like you said, some of these organizations, you're just a number, you're just a person. Here, you're somebody, you know, and that's, I think our department heads have really shown that. And if, if us as an organization or us as a board can do something as little as this to show for that, I think it goes a long ways, I really do.
Oh, can we? Somebody made a motion that they, we, this is a legal meeting, we could.
Yep, you, you could, would you be comfortable if you wanted to do it? That we would actually have a draft of what the Personnel Policy Amendment would look like?
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah.
Here?
And then bring that to the next. And that was the impact was for twenty twenty-three or upon implementation?
Yeah.
Media. That's assuming everybody gets a good evaluation.
Yes.
I think that's the best direction.
Yeah, and if you, I mean, the, the actual, the exact wording is in the October tenth Personnel Minutes.
Yeah.
Um, but I just wanna be sure that there's no confusion over where it fits in the policy or what it looks like.
And then the compensation study, I think we're a couple of years away from the beginning of that, if I understand it, we, we kind of said to ourselves, we're gonna do it every ten years. And I know we can't wait till year ten to start.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think it's good to be aware of the fact that it, it's we have to do what, what we said we were gonna do it, or we'll be in the same boat we were the last time we did it, with you, for about twenty years.
Yeah, and well, I think we would, we should be deliberate in the timing of it with regards to when collective bargaining agreements expire.
Yeah.
Right, so we wouldn't wanna do it the year after, we just, you know, lock in multi-year agreements. And we wouldn't wanna do it right before we're gonna negotiate, unless we have some sense that we would use those results in negotiation. That make sense?
Well, yeah, I think we're gonna try to hit the sweet spot in there midway between So this is gonna be a, a county policy? Which could be removed later, and if it's, if it's county-driven, or is it gonna be entered into contracts and then?
So the, what I'm understanding is that at the next board meeting, you would have a proposal for amending the personnel policy to incorporate the pay for performance at two percent at fifteen years. You will then immediately get, we will immediately get contacted by every union.
MOUs are.
That, that say, hey, we should do that as well. And I don't know what our answer to that would be, right? I think that's worth some county board thought.
Yeah, I was kinda going, is this gonna be for the people that don't have unions, like non-union, or is this for everybody?
Well, it's, it would be for the non-union, but the fact that it's now in two collective bargaining agreements and presumably available to the non-union, how do you wanna treat your seven other unions?
Yeah, but I'm just, that's what I'm, it's, it's there.
And, and maybe even more importantly, it's maybe easy, maybe fair is pretty evident here, but how do you get there? Do you say, well, we're gonna wait until the contract is open for negotiation? Or do you do an MOU, and if you do an MOU, is it a gimme, or are expecting to have a negotiation? Right, I.
That's where I was kinda going.
Yeah. Nothing is easy.
No easy answers, right?
Cause I think it's, I mean, I, and realistically, I think it's hard to say, no, we're not gonna renegotiate it until your contract is up for negotiation, if that's two years out.
So what set this in motion?
We have it in two collective bargaining agreements.
What, yeah, set it in motion?
Oh, we, we have it in two collective bargaining agreements, and we have gotten very positive feedback from those from that department head, that said, this was really good, this has helped me both on the performance evaluation side to improve that program, and also to recognize employees who have been here for fifteen years who are performing well, that they would get a little compensation for that.
Isn't most of the contracts have a fifteen-year step?
I don't think so.
Is it a ten, is, did it go down to ten?
Ten.
Okay, well, I can speak of being here for thirty-five years, that, you know, after that, I think there used to be a fifteen, maybe, I don't know. But after that time period, you're just going, oh yeah, whatever. You know, um, so it, it is, it's nice to have something to look forward to.
Yeah. I, I, I had a whole career here, and it was a ten-year step at one point that was condensed to a seven, and then they added something at fifteen. So it just keeps changing and evolving all the time.
Yeah.
I just, it's just what, it's just what happens over the course of time.
I think that's one of the thought processes, though, is if we have a fifteen-year step, we don't wanna do a performance a performance increase at fifteen years when they're already gonna get a fifteen-year step. So I mean, I think that's gonna have to be looked at with steps too, you know, if you go for the five years out, you know, so if you have a ten-year step and then you fifteen years so that you have something at that point, instead of, does that, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, it's incentive for the employee, and it's a growth chance for an employee to take on extra stuff.
But if you have a fifteen-year step to get the fifteen-year step and the performance step, all at the same time, doesn't, is it not necessary or not?
So there is no fifteen-year step.
Okay.
There is, the, I think, year ten is the max in any contract.
Well, if we do a comp study and they go back to fifteen years, we need to relook at this, hopefully they won't do that again. It's a long time.
Would be eligible in the entire county, if, if that's the road you're gonna go down. Not.
Yeah.
And whether we phase it in and.
All the contracts.
One year, two years, several contracts. So we, maybe we look at it, we can't abort it.
And I, I do believe the market is way different than, I'm gonna say even four years. This has really surfaced because of lack of workers, and, uh, they ain't there.
I'd rather, I'd rather give somebody a fifteen-hundred-dollar, two percent thing, but been here seventeen years, then pay somebody five thousand dollars that hasn't worked here a day.
And if it helps keep that experience here.
Right.
Far better.
Because that's when people get itchy feet sometimes, they've been here, nobody's paying attention to them.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think it's something we have to get done before January first, or.
No, there is, there is no time limit.
We can take our time. Can we chew on it?
Yeah, yeah. You let me know when you want it to come back, if you want, I mean, it doesn't have to come on the December twentieth.
I'd say take your time and give us, give us a lot of background, so I, I would like to know what's, when, when this thing all got done. How many potentially? Do we have? You know, thirty people potentially, I have no idea.
All right, we'll do that.
Okay. That brings us to the end of the agenda.